Just let me.
There you go.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Woodland Park City Council, August seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-five work session for interviews for council candidates for the vacancy.
April.
April? Did I say August?
You said August.
Yeah. I don't mean to rush things.
I don't know, for a moment there I thought, did I just like say it wrong?
April seventeenth, forgive me. Anyway, Suzanne, can you do, do we need to do roll call?
We'll do that later.
Okay, thank you. All right. Um, council, I think you received a memo that kind of talks about our process this evening. And with that, we are going to ask Amy to take each of the candidates, except for Sean Nielsen, because she will be first, into our conference room. We're going to sequester yous, and then each individual interview will be done individually without the others listening. And, and we would ask you, please don't go online and listen to the interviews either. So with that, if, if everyone but Sean could go with Amy, and then she'll bring you in as it's your turn. Thank you, everyone. Sean, would you like to join us at the podium, please?
Thank you.
Would you just like to give us, we'll give you a couple of minutes
Okay.
to tell us a little bit about you and, and for the council, and kind of tell us where you're, where you live and, well, no, you live in Woodland Park. You don't have to do that.
Yeah.
We hope, anyway.
I do, I do.
If you'll just an introduction, yeah.
Yeah.
For us, please. Thank you.
Okay. My name is Sean Nielsen. I am here applying today for this position. Do you want me to just read off a couple of the reasons why I feel like that, and then we'll do?
Whatever you'd like to share. Okay.
Um, I recently just retired from El Paso County. During my twenty-seven years with El Paso County, I helped with cost analyst, case management, policy development, database management, compliance monitoring, working with the state to determine legislations, rules, and regulations. I worked with the county to establish transparency and accountability, profit, proficiency in roles and regulations for both state and federal regulations. I helped with the incident command when it came to Waldo Canyon, Black Forest Fire, Manitou Flooding, and security hail damage. I've worked with CSPD. I've worked with El Paso County sheriffs, Fort Carson, Red Cross, and El Paso County commissioners to establish efforts, supplies, and any things that were needed to help benefit the better people of El Paso County. And so with that being said, I'd like to pass that on to the people who live in Woodland Park. Um, we've been here for about eight years now. I do live in the city. I love it here. Um, I've been on the planning commission, and I just kind of felt like this was a nice way to kind of broaden my horizons and maybe help a little bit more.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, council. Steve, would you like to go first and ask your question, please? We're gonna take about eight minutes. Eric's gonna run the timer for us because we have exactly enough time to talk with everyone. Okay, thanks, Steve.
I'm very, very highly involved in the community and stuff like that, especially with the kids parking racks and the community itself. How could you feel you could do the same thing as a council member?
Um, actually, I'm would love the opportunity to help and kind of expand my, my wealth and nature in that. Uh, personally, I do a lot of volunteering at homeless shelters. We feed a lot of them. Um, in El Paso County, I was noticing one of the things appears, we don't have a lot of that. We have a lot of, you know, maybe places where you can go and, and get food and stuff like that, food pantries, but we don't have a lot of outreach programs, it seems, in that nature. And so part of one of the things I was hoping to do once I got up here was to help expand on that or help the kids, help at-risk seniors and things like that, that I have done traditionally with El Paso County.
George, would you like to go next?
Thank you. Hi, Sean. Um, so tell me a little bit, um, give me your thoughts about the local economy up here in Woodland Park, the businesses, and this could be broad-ranging. I'm just curious to see uh, where you, where you stand on economic concerns or issues.
Sure. Um, part of what I saw when we were on the planning commission was that we would see different businesses try to come in, try to get established, try to get running. Um, a lot of those businesses, I feel, need a little bit of extra help or a little bit of push, or maybe, maybe just a little hand-holding from the city council in order to get that thriving and in order to get that going. I would love to see where possibly at one point, we've got more businesses here, we're thriving more here, even if we do decide to do the cut-through that they were talking about by twenty, twenty-thirty, I believe, um, to help strengthen us so that even if that does come in, it doesn't cripple or hurt our economics for Woodland Park. And so I, I would love to see that happen, and, and then, you know, I'm willing to kind of help in any way strengthen those, especially if it considers maybe, I don't know if there's groups or something like that, like little breakout groups or something that might help. I, I would love to be on those. Um, I have, I've worked with CWFC. And so part of that is the Welfare Fraud Council. We did a lot of small committees. And so in those small committees, we were doing more than just fostering things that, you know, would necessarily help our committee per se. Um, it was for the benefit of Colorado whole, and so I want to work with sixty-four counties on nurturing certain, you know, um, collective committees. How do we help? What do we do? How can we help, you know, a fellow county in need when we need to? And I feel a lot of those skills would come into play here to help strengthen that.
Mm-hmm. Thank you. Carol?
At first, Sean, I enjoyed serving with you on Planning Commission.
Thank you.
A little bit better there. Um, but I did know that at the time you were working in Colorado Springs.
Right.
And now you have retired. Um, and your list of accomplishments and endeavors with, uh, El Paso County and Colorado Springs are quite impressive, and those are skill sets that we would need up here. But the question I will ask all the candidates is, here in Woodland Park and in Teller County, aside from the Planning Commission, have you volunteered in any other groups here in the, the local area?
Um, besides Planning Commission, I have not. Um, I, I recently had to kind of let that Planning Commission go for a little bit. Uh, I, it is something that I thought maybe I would go back to, but then I thought it might be a conflict. So, to do both, I'm like, oh, okay, I might want to wait a minute and see, but yeah.
Okay. Well, thank you. Thank you for applying.
Thank you, Carol. Jeff?
So first off, Sean, thank you for applying as well. I'm really excited to see how many applicants we have. Um, anyways, my question's pretty simple. The, the seat that we were trying to fill was on council for roughly a year. Um, in the past year, and this is not a trick question, nothing is an acceptable answer by all means, but in the past year, what, have you seen council do something or not do something that you would have done differently if you had been sitting up here?
Uh, one of the things that I have noticed recently is that, um, we decided that we were going to do the, I think it was like the one point nine percent that that was going to schools. And then we decided to take that money back because we felt like that that wasn't being handled appropriately. And so with that, I thought what I would have rather done, or, or, or maybe kind of advised on our throne out there is that I would have liked to have seen that money set into a separate account where both the school districts and the city has, you know, authorization on it. We both have to, you know, um, pretty much say, yes, we agree to this money being spent. And then there were going to have to be certain things such as, um, you know, we, we like to see certain reports come in and, you know, and maybe there might have to be a special committee, or maybe there might have to be more meetings involved so that, A, the people of Woodland Park don't feel like their money is being spent misappropriately. And, two, you know, the, the school district doesn't feel like it's being broad-sighted because of a couple of members, or now all of a sudden the rug has been pulled out from under them. So I would like to foster some of those different relationships, maybe change things a few, you know, around a little bit to where they still have access to what they need and what they were expecting. And so we are still able to provide that, but we can also sit there and we can look at the other people within, you know, um, Woodland Park of the city and say, yes, we're doing what you've asked, and yes, we're being good stewards. And so I think that was one of the things that I would have touched on differently.
Thank you.
Catherine?
So this is kind of similar to his, but, um, many have said we're a divided community at this point. Um, what do you see as a, a way to reduce the division?
Uh, I agree. Um, depending on certain people that you've talked to, it does seem like there is a certain divide that's there. And so I think that, um, getting together, fostering more of a community, inviting more people, maybe inviting more people, letting more people know what's kind of going on within the government, so we're very transparent is a good way to get rid of that. Um, maybe making ourselves more available. Hey, I'm, I'm here. I, I want to make sure that you get to, to meet your, you know, city council members or whatever, and just helping foster maybe those ideas and thoughts of, how do you feel like we can bridge that?
Thanks. Um, I'd just like for you to share with me what you see as the job of a council member.
Okay.
And how you would bring, um, how you would approach that, and why you really want to serve. Why you want to serve as a council member?
It's the hardest. Two parts, I think. Right? Um, honestly, because I want to serve the people. Um, as I've stated previously, I've served in El Paso County for over twenty-seven years, the, the county members that are there. I'd like to see that happen. I would plan on jumping in with both feet, learning very quickly, what do I need to know? Where do we need to be? How can I get up to speed quickly? Um, I think a lot of the legislation pieces and stuff that I have in place will help me transition very fast and help me get there quickly. So I think that that, that would be a good place to start.
Okay, we have twenty-nine seconds left, so tell me, tell me what you think your role is as a council person?
To help the people of Woodland Park and to foster and make sure that everybody gets an equal share and footing, and everybody wants to live here and be here and feel like it's a safe community. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can I ask one quick question?
Hurry up, you've got nine seconds.
How would you be able to contain the adversity of the community?
Well, I feel within the adversity of the community, like I've stated, I've worked for El Paso County for twenty-seven years, and part of that was as a fraud investigator. You've got all kinds of diversity coming at you. You've got people who are either disabled, people who are economically unstable, people who are currently homeless. We've had people who may have had a disability or may have been some sort of criminal, so you have to figure out very quickly, how do you work with all those people? How do you make them kind of help you and get where you need to get and get where they need to get and be equitable about it? And so I've learned very quickly that, you know, these are the kind of the skills that I have that I think will adapt better and make things a little bit smoother. And just, I don't take things personal.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sean.
Thank you, guys.
Mary, she will take you back to your little nest while we talk to someone else. So next up is Mary Ward. Yes. We have extra time because we lost one candidate. Pretend like you don't have extra time, though. Okay. Welcome, Mary. If you would just take the first two minutes and tell us a little bit about you and, and what we should know about you to consider you for the seat, please.
Sure. Um, thank you so much for taking the time to interview today. Um, my name is Mary Ward. I'm a Woodland Park resident. Um, I bought my house up here in two thousand and twenty-one, um, and have since been living up here with my partner and our kiddo, um, attending Woodland Park schools and just, um, working to integrate into the community. Um, but I don't know if you read my letter. I grew up coming to summer camp up here, um, which is really where I fell in love with Woodland Park. Um, I've been a nature lover since I was a little kid, and, um, I just love being in the mountains and being, um, part of a really small community. Um, even though I've only lived here four years now, I feel like I, um, am part of maybe the best community I've ever had personally in my life. Um, I have, yeah, beautiful friendships and, you know, fellow parents and fellow community members that I've met throughout the years up here. Um, just, you know, working to fight for our schools and fight for, um, the rights of everyone in this community, including our children, to, um, just exercise their freedom and, um, be protected from, um, tyrannical government. Just joking, kind of. Anyway, um, I think I'm a really hard worker. I, um, have a master's degree in health promotion. I work as a health coach right now. And so, um, I am continuously working to educate myself around, um, you know, societal needs, community needs in that regard. And I think, um, that could also be an asset in this role.
Thank you. Catherine, you want to go first this time? So, hi.
Hi.
Thanks for applying. Um, many have said we are a divided community. What do you see as a way to reduce the division?
Sure. So I think that, um, you know, a divided community in any community, we're gonna have all kinds of differences of opinions. Um, just living in a society where we have all kinds of different generations together in the workplace and in our homes and in our families and in our schools. Um, I think that it's inevitable that we're gonna have differences among us. And so I think um, one of the most important things in, in bridging that connection is focusing on where we can all align. And, um, at the end of the day, like, we are all human beings. We all need food, water, shelter, a sense of connection to our community, a sense of belongingness. And so I think supporting those things, making sure that everyone in our community has their needs met, um, is a great place to start. Um, and then, you know, of course, in our government, that extends out to clean air, clean water, um, infrastructure, um, you know, transportation, um, childcare, elder care, like, there's all kinds of different areas where we all, not only do we need one another, but we need a government that is effective, that uses our finances efficiently. Um, and so those are kind of the areas where I would want to focus on, um, bringing people together.
Thanks. Jeff?
So first off as well, thank you for applying. Um, my question's pretty short as well. Um, the seat that you're replacing has been on, was on council for about a year. Um, in that year, what have you seen us do or not do that you would ma- maybe would have done differently? And saying, you know, nothing is perfectly acceptable.
Yeah, you guys are perfect, amazing, no notes. Uh, no, just kidding. Um, obviously, you're all human beings too. Um, I do think that you all, from what I've seen as an outsider, um, it seems like you all really care about this community and, um, have made really agonizing decisions to try to um, uphold your responsibility as an elected official. So, um, I, I wouldn't have any critique. I also feel like I have lots to learn when it comes to, um, local government, and so um, maybe I'll have more notes in the future. Um, but I think it's kind of an impossible, you know, I've watched like the tax, the, um, sales tax decision and, um, the way there were so many very passionate voices involved in that conversation, and I think that you all did your best and, um, yeah, I don't, can't think of a criticism.
No, thank you.
Thank you. Carol? Your microphone.
Thank you for applying. Um, your resume is, is remarkable, and I really appreciate what you have done with, particularly with the youth in the community. Uh, the question I'm asking candidates, um, you, you, as I said, you've done a lot, but have there been other volunteer, uh, opportunities that you've taken advantage of here in Woodland Park or in Teller County? Any other boards or commissions that you've served on?
Um, I would say my role has been definitely more an informal capacity. Um, I am just learning a little bit more about community organizing since, um, fall of two thousand and twenty-one. So, um, I think, yeah, just kind of researching, learning, but I haven't served on in any official capacity for Woodland Park yet.
George?
Hi, Mary. Thank you for applying. Um, my question is broad. In, in a sense, I'd like to understand your, um, your take on the local economy here in Woodland Park. And that could, that could be broad. It could be sales tax. It could be the local businesses, et cetera, restaurants.
Sure. Um, yeah, it's been interesting observing the local economy in Woodland Park. Um, I, my first, one of my first jobs while I was in college was working as a river guide in Canyon City. And so that was an area that was very seasonal tourism, uh, focused, where, you know, summer and winter looked very different in those types of towns, and I see a little bit of that in our town. Um, I've spent a little bit of time also bartending in Woodland Park, which is an interesting way to observe the local economy. Um, that, yeah, I, I got to meet tourists, but I also get to meet locals out and about, and, um, it's interesting. Like, I think that people who traditionally work in like service industry type of roles um, will tell you that it's difficult to live up here. It's expensive. It's hard to find a affordable place to live. Um, I know lots of people who are deeper established in their careers who commute down the pass. So I think that where there's lots of missed opportunities to, for locals to support the local economy. It seems like our economy does kind of depend on tourists in a way. Um, and I think I have a lot to learn also about the, the economy in general. Um, but I think that, you know, if our, when our community is thriving, that also benefits our economy. And so I think that there's definitely some, um, holes that could be filled in that regard.
Thank you.
Steve?
Yes, ma'am.
Your turn.
Since, uh, Councilman Harvey already asked half my question. But the other thing is, you know, continuing on with, say, volunteer work and stuff, especially with parking wrecks or the other, you know, committees that we have, like, you know, the Keep Woodland Park Beautiful and stuff like that. Is that something that you would intend to or like to do? And the second question would be, this is not a very easy position to be in. So how would you be able to mentally sustain yourself with all the questions, negativities, and everything else?
Sure. So, um, I think it's almost imperative that as a member on council, you are out in the community um, participating in those roles. So I would definitely see that part of my life expanding more. I think since being up here, I've been very focused on our local schools and just, um, I'm a relatively new parent as well, so focusing on that part of my life, um, and being active in my kid's life. Um, but yeah, I think as a member of council, you know, being out there volunteering is really important. Um, and what's the second part of your question? I'm sorry.
How would you be able to mentally
Right.
take on all the criticism and everything else that you will?
Sure. Yeah, I actually, luckily, I've already been criticized a lot in this town, so I'm learning a lot about that. And I think that's a huge component of my role and my work as a health coach is, um, filling your cup and keeping yourself well and healthy. And so, um, I have lots of tools, coping mechanisms in place already that I utilize in that regard. Um, and so I think just continuing to lean into that in the ways I know how, um, you know, my community, my outside time, my breathing, um, and, yeah, just have being, you know, interconnected with other people who are also fighting that fight.
Mary, would you just explain your thoughts and what you see the role of a council member is and how you would, uh, fall into that?
I think the role of a council member is to advocate for the community. And I think that means, um, being available and seeking out, um, perspectives from the community and utilizing those quantitative findings and qualitative findings to, um, promote and, um, put forward policy that improves the lives of your constituents.
Thank you. Appreciate you answering the questions. And Mary, Amy will now take you back to the room, and we have next Blaine Miller. Amy?
Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, Blaine.
Thank you.
You're welcome. If you would just take the first couple of minutes to introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about you and anything else you'd like to share with the council?
Members of Woodland, Woodland Park City Council, thank you for this opportunity to speak with you. It is an honor. I'm a Colorado native and spent most of my life in the state. I've been living in the southern Colorado region for over twenty years and here in Woodland Park for almost ten. I'm a teacher, and I've been doing that for almost thirty years. I teach English at Woodland Park High School, and I'm an adjunct at Pike's Peak State College. I'm also a volunteer wrestling coach, and I serve on two committees. It is good, honorable work, one of service and of contribution. The students, their families, fellow staff members, they are the constant reminders, the dignity of my calling. Folks, I simply si- consider city council as an opportunity to serve and contribute, much like my family here, who are small business owners, law enforcement, first responders, and healthcare workers. There are good things and good people in Woodland Park, the restaurants, the shops, outdoor recreation. I see folks out and about, and I probably have some of their children in class. There are also some issues, the road conditions, the traffic, the cost of living, and yes, the recent tension between the school district and the city. A more pressing concern for me is the increasing division among the people, and for a variety of reasons, many I think have lost faith and trust. But as a local resident and as a teacher, I've worked diligently to integrate myself into this community, and I am deeply concerned. Indeed, we have work to do. I am the right person for this council because I, first and foremost, I'm a good listener. I encourage people to open up and share their stories. I speak with conviction, and you'll always get an honest and respectful response. My conduct is that of a teacher. That's how I see the world, and I will always act as one who has students in front of him. I operate my classroom with integrity, and you can expect the same thing from me while I'm on this council.
Thank you.
Okay?
Did you have somewhere? I'm sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt you.
Oh, I, I do understand that there are problems that are multifaceted. They're dynamic. They're complicated. I like to solve them with critically thought-out solutions. I balance innovation with practicality. I avoid making things worse by guessing. To quote a movie line, sometimes you have to put a square peg into a round hole. With respect and on purpose, thank you for listening.
Thank you, sir. Who wants to go first this time? Carol?
Caught you off guard, didn't I? Yeah, first, Blaine, thank you for applying. Um, it, it, as, as all the candidates have acknowledged, um, right now is, is gonna be a challenge on the council, uh, for anyone who steps into, uh, Councilman Baldwin's position. Uh, but the question I'm asking all the candidates, uh, is what other, um, volunteer, um, opportunities have you taken advantage of here in the city? I've seen that you've got a, an extensive background with, with coaching, uh, uh, especially, um, important to me was your, your, uh, work with, uh, Special Olympics. I have a granddaughter with Down Syndrome, and she's, she is a Special Olympics, uh, wonder in North Carolina. But I appreciate that, and I appreciate your time as a wrestling coach as well, because my husband was a wrestling coach. But what other, uh, opportunities have you taken advantage of here in Woodland Park or Teller County?
Well, unfortunately, the, the one that I was involved with most recently, the Mayor's Cup Woodland Park Race, the, the World Race.
We were talking about that today.
That's, that's gone away, and when I was coaching down in Manitou Springs High School for cross-country, we used to bring our runners up as kind of a preseason run. I participated as a coach. I participated as a, as a, as a runner when I wasn't coaching. I participated as a coach, I participated as a, as a, as a runner when I wasn't coaching. We worked water stations. I did, I did that. The Woodland Park Karate Center, the Kempo Karate Center over by City Market, a few summers ago, I, I devoted my time. I gave about three week, about three afternoons a week, just to go in and teach some martial arts and basic self-defense. The gentleman, Tom, and I can't remember Tom's last name for the life. That sounds correct, thank you. He and I had the same individual, we, we had another common connection within the martial arts arena. I did it completely for free and I just, I didn't see a whole lot available for the young people in the town at the time. And I thought that was just my opportunity to, to just give and contribute something that I was fairly knowledgeable about, to be quite frank.
I, I'm gonna do a real quick follow-up on that. Where I'm kind of going with the question is, what is your exposure to parliamentary procedure and the open meetings laws of Colorado?
The two committees that I serve on, the school activities committee and the DAC committee. We operate for the most part within a parliamentary procedure. My background, twenty years ago, maybe twenty-five years ago now, I was involved very briefly with the student council out at Falcon High School. And I was not the primary sponsor of that. The open meetings law, I, I'm somewhat familiar with it, but it, as I understand it, it's just, if I'm meeting with somebody who's on the same committee, that has to be done in public. It, it can't be done via text messaging and emails and things like that. I'm okay with it. I think if you serve on a public committee, you've got to be open to the public. I'm not, I'm not a fan of underhanded, I, that's not me. I don't do that.
Thank you. George?
Yeah, thank you. Blaine, thanks for applying and it's great to have you here. My question is, is broad, so I'm gonna give you a lot of room on this one. Tell me your thoughts, challenges, concerns with our local economy.
It's expensive to live here. I don't have the background as an economist to specify why it is so expensive. I know that Woodland Park is often viewed as a, a small retirement bedroom community, if I could use that term. Where individuals live up here, but they commute down to the springs. I don't have all the answers to that. I would like to be a participant in any kind of community development that, that could offer younger families to come up here and start and, and, and just live. And then the nature of answering the question, I, could you repeat the question again?
It's just a broad, you know, look at our local economy here. What, what kind of challenges, what kind of opportunities do you see?
Well, I think there's a tremendous opportunity for growth, growth within the business arena. We, we've got a lot of restaurants here, we've got a lot of shops, but we don't have a whole lot of what I would just call bigger industry. From a recreational standpoint, folks, there's not a whole lot for young teenagers to do in this town. I, I've had visions, I've had ideas throughout my, my time of perhaps an outdoor education or recreation center with like batting cages and miniature golf and, and arcade. I, I don't have the business background to do that, I just, I just have the idea. But I think until we, until we look at Woodland Park as a town that people drive through, I'd like to make Woodland Park a town that people drive to and stay and, and spend a little bit of money. But there's not a whole lot that's on the right and left side of Highway twenty-four. Unfortunately, we're blocked a little bit, we got that rock over there called Pike's Peak. And, and I, I don't want to have to be, I don't want to have to cut into the forest necessarily. But I do think that there's, there's room to bring back, like, maybe the, years ago, there used to be a bowling alley. Where the old, I, I want to say it's a, it's an auto park store now. That was a lot, that was a long time ago. And it's not here anymore. That's the answer to the question right there.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Steve?
Me being a longtime, two-decade coach at the high school for wrestling and football and middle school. Going forward, how could you help with the, like, say Parks and Recs and stuff like that? Because we used to do that a lot, okay, you know, decades, you know, a long time ago. But with the other question is, how do you think that you could mentally, I know you deal with kids. So that's a start, okay? But with the criticism and everything from the public being on city council?
If I'm a parent and my child wants to get involved in an activity, I'm gonna support that, wanting to get involved with the activity. I would love to be on the drawing board, I would love to be the person to go out and find some of the talent that's already in this town, the volunteer coaches, the individuals who are willing to give. I want to know why those opportunities went away. I'd like to take a look at some of the root causes, why, why are they no longer here in existence? Folks, I, I see the world via the eyes of an educator. I'm not, I, I'm not a politician of, of any degree. I want to do what's right for kids. And Parks and Recreation, it's a robust program down in Colorado Springs, Manitou Springs has, has another one. I'd like to look at possible partnerships, maybe with the school district. Maybe there's a way for the city can use the, the school district facilities, I don't know if it currently exists or not, I don't know the history. But I do know in certain small towns, the school district, they open up the gym. They get to use the, the, their ball fields with other, other city organizations and sports, that's what I would take a look at.
Catherine?
Thanks, hi, thanks for applying also. My question is, many have said we are a divided community, what do you see as a way to reduce the division?
I think we have to have some honest, forthright, and perhaps very difficult conversations around a table with maybe some coffee. And quit shouting back and forth, because it gets exhausting. As a school district employee, I shouldn't be worried about walking into a building. And what am I gonna feel like when I walk into that building because of the, the storm that keeps brewing up above? I don't see a clear line of why all this conflict is there, I think it's kind of multifaceted and it's dynamic and it's like a scatter plot. Well, over the last few years, and you know, I can, I can have my opinions on various individuals and entities in the community. But I think we just need to quit shouting at one another, quit blaming each other, quit finger pointing. And let's just have a sit-down civil conversation. It's how I run my classroom, we have to have civil engagement, we have to have civil discourse. Not on Facebook, not on any other social media, let's just sit down and talk. We're not gonna solve everything, we're not gonna please everybody. But if, if, if we've, if we've lost the art of gab, to quote Emerson, we've lost a lot. And I'll close on that.
Chip?
All right, so the seat that you're replacing was on council for about a year. In this last year, what have you seen as do or not do that you may have done differently if you had been sitting in that seat?
Well, I'll answer it honestly. When the sales tax issue first became an issue with the school district, I think I would have given a second chance to the school district. A second chance to make it right. I only know this situation from my position in the school. I don't know what's, I truly don't know what's fact or fiction. But I would have given the second chance to make it right. Understanding that the people who presented it the first time, they didn't, they didn't do their job the first time. I'll close with that.
Thank you. Just a quick question from me, I just would like to understand your understanding of the role of a city council member. And how you would bring, what you would bring to that.
I think first and foremost, my, my role as a city council member would be to listen to the members who are, to the citizens of the city, to the citizens of the town, to the greater county, if you will. I don't pretend to, I don't understand everything. I mean, I, I know a lot about a lot of things, but I don't know a whole lot about a few things. And the whole concept of government, I, I would have to educate myself. But the way I look at it, you're, you're a public figure. And you need to be able to engage with your public to whatever degree. And if that's, if that's something in a, in a meeting such as this, okay, maybe it's, maybe it's a, a, I don't know, a small sit-down at one of our local coffee shops, Cafe Leo, something like that. I, I will have a conversation with just about anybody who's willing to sit down and talk. I also think it's important to model. I, I don't have, like, I don't have a social media, I'm not, I'm not one to, to put a lot of blab out there. I just think that needs to be modeled better, we need to go at things intelligently and with, with compassion and with a little bit of empathy. And if I need to understand somebody, I need to listen to them. If they're gonna open up and tell me their story and their history, I need to listen to that. I, I mentioned this in my, in my speech, but I can use analogy, I can pull quotes all day long as an English teacher. But I know exactly what I know and I know what I stand for. And I think that's what allows me to relate to people. I think that's what allows individuals to feel good about telling me where they're coming from. And as a city council member, I just have to listen.
Thank you. Amy, if you would please take Blaine back to the conference room, thank you so much for your time.
Appreciate your time, thank you.
You bet. And next we have Seth Bryant. Welcome, Seth.
Thank you.
You would just take a couple of minutes and you'll notice there's a timer on the screen above your head.
I do.
It's not cast in stone, but if you would just take a few moments and tell us a little bit about yourself and things that you'd like the council to know about you.
Sure. Well, I'm Seth Bryant. I've been in Woodland Park now just over four years. It was about five years ago that I decided that this was my family's forever home. For the most part, I'm, I'm just a regular dad and, you know, guy in town. I, I work for Safeway doing information security. I'm involved with my kid's school and their sports that they try out from time to time. But really, I, I want to be a good neighbor and that's kind of why I'm here. I think that leading a community takes a lot of different perspectives and opinions and life experience. And that with diverse groups, you know, the best outcomes are had. And I want to be part of that diversity. I see a lot of people here with a lot of experience and skills. And I believe that I have some experience and skills that would help, you know, with this group and help supplement the insight and information that could be considered. I certainly don't envy any of you, I have watched you sit up here and be the subject of, you know, public criticism and magnifying glass. And I've seen you make some very hard decisions. And it's, it's been evident that, you know, it, it weighs on you all the decisions that you have to make. But I believe that I can, I can help make those decisions and I can help be a positive and productive member of this group. My only concern is with what's best for the city of Woodland Park. How do we keep growing now and build a better community? And how do we, you know, set up the foundations for positive growth in the future?
Thank you. Smitty, you go first this time. No, we're gonna go with you. Catch you off guard.
Same question as the others. You can't say that you were involved in the community, the coaching of kids and stuff like that. How, or will you still continue to do that, especially being a council person? But the second question that's, for me, is also really important is, like you said, we do get criticized a lot. Okay? Do you feel that you will be able to keep your cool? To think things through and not let it get personal for you?
So to answer the first part of your question, absolutely, I'm interested in being involved, volunteering, being out there, whether I'm on the dais or not. It's, it's an example I look to set for my kids. Is when you care about something and you want things to be good, you have to put in work to do that. I've done that through volunteering in our schools, volunteering with the Parks and Rec Department. When our city has hosted the Traveling Vietnam Wall Memorial, I've gone and helped put that up along with the other members of this community. I, I certainly can't be involved in everything, I'm a guy with a job and kids and a family. But where the opportunity presents itself, I, I really don't have a better way to spend my time. The second part of your question about criticism and composure, I'm certainly human. I, I won't, you know, act like I don't have emotions or strong feelings about things. But I do realize that in positions of leadership, it's important you be able to compartmentalize and maybe your own bias and beliefs and be open to hearing all of the facts and views on a situation. I'd like to say I've been somewhat through the wringer a little bit already in this community. And I, I don't think I let it get to me. I'd like to still believe I'm, I'm the same positive person I've, I've been since the day I've moved here.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
George?
Hey Seth, thank you for applying. My question's broad. Talk to me, give me your thoughts about the local economy up here.
Well, I've been here for four years and I've certainly seen storefronts come and go and more for sale signs stay up longer. I'm definitely concerned about our ability to attract and retain businesses and economic opportunity here. I know the council is tied as to what the city can do to, you know, attract economic ability or economic growth or development. But I do think some of the different bodies in this town, like the DDA, are doing a good job bringing in new projects that are viable, that we can see being built in the downtown. And potentially, you know, we're gonna bring in new business and education and, and tourism to our town. I guess I am concerned with making Woodland Park a good place for people to move. Because when people move here, they're gonna spend money here. And when people are spending money here, that's gonna attract businesses, it's going to make, you know, running new restaurants or clothing stores or whatever the community, you know, kind of calls for, much more viable. So I guess that, that's how I would view my role as a council member. Is doing what I can to make Woodland Park an attractive place, to bring your family, to bring your tax dollars, to bring your tourism dollars within the scope of what we can do in the charter. Thank you. You're welcome.
Carol?
Thanks Seth for applying. I know you've, you've watched the deliberations of this, this body probably over the last year. And for you to volunteer to even put yourself out there is, is very appreciated. You've already mentioned some of the volunteer opportunities that you've taken advantage of to include Parks and Recreation. Um, you've already mentioned some of the volunteer uh, opportunities that you've taken advantage of to include parks and recreation. Um, let's go a little bit into that. What, what did you do with parks and recreation and, and were you involved in the Avenger purchase?
I, I was not involved in the Avenger purchase, but I am very excited about having that new open space available um, for recreation. Uh, when we first moved here, um, uh, it was soccer season and that was one of the first immediate ways we could identify to get our kids, meeting other kids, um, starting to feel about the town and the community and, you know, check out new opportunities. So uh, we went to sign up, they relayed they were in desperate need of coaches. Um, and you know, my kid can't be on a soccer team if there's not a coach. So uh, my wife and I stepped up as co-coaches. Thank you Kelly. Um, and uh, really that was kind of our introduction to this community. We met so many great families just through having their kids involved in those same kind of sporting programs. Um, our kids have also done swimming during the summer leagues. I really enjoyed the community, being able to, you know, use that part of the aquatic center and have them compete and do fun stuff like that. Um, but very, very much enthusiastic about what our Parks and Rec programs do for our community and our kids.
Yep.
All right, Mr. Bryant. Anyways, the seat that you're replacing was on council for roughly a year. In, in that year, what have you seen us do or not do as a body that you may have done differently if you would have sat up here during that time?
Oh, um, you know, I am very hesitant to uh, Monday morning quarterback your decisions.
Please do.
Just, well frankly, I, I did not have access to all the information and insight and conversations that you had to make those decisions. Um, I don't know that I, I would have made different decisions. I can tell you what I've appreciated about your decision-making process and that is um, I have seen you go from what I thought were almost predetermined and uh, decisions to hearing um, people come up and talk, to hearing facts and presentations. And I've seen you all consider, you know, the information being presented. Um, I'm very appreciative of the um, spirit of partnership that I've seen you interact with other bodies with. Um, even when you're put in hard positions, I think um, I think compromise is very important and being able to lead with a spirit of compromise has been something I've really admired as well about this body.
Catherine?
Hey Seth, thanks again. Um, so my question is, many have said we are a divided community. What do you see as a way to reduce the division?
Um, really inclusion. Um, we need to facilitate conversations with people who are having opposing views. Um, I think not even just to this body and to the council, but between each other. Um, early on in the program, I participated in some of the Braver Angels um, programs that they were hosting up at the library. And just being able to have um, conversations about how we discuss differences and maintain civility and things like that. Um, I think is, is really important. Um, I, I, I've got off of social media, um, particularly because of the divisiveness of it. I have found when I come and talk to people face to face, there is so much less distrust or animosity or just even emotions out the gate. And that conversations between people are really what matters. It's not these posts on the message boards. And the more we can do to facilitate that, encourage that, I think will help heal the divisiveness. You're welcome.
Thanks Seth. Just a quick question and short answer, because we're short on time.
Yes ma'am.
Um, is what do you find the role of a city council member to be?
Uh, the role of the city council member is to help govern the city of Woodland Park within their authority granted to them by the charter. Um, it's uh, plain and simple. I think there's supposed to be a voice for their constituents, constituents. And uh, a point of public interaction, but it's, it's governance within the terms of the charter.
Thank you.
Yes ma'am.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
So Mayor, Mr. Rodriguez is not present.
Okay, we'll go to Don Hoying then?
Yeah, I've reached out to him and I have not heard from, back from him. I texted him, so I don't know.
If he shows up, we'll put him on the bottom. We'll put him at the end. Hopefully nothing has happened. Welcome Don. Just give us a, a short, brief, um, short, brief, brief uh, idea of, of your, of who you are and what you'd like the council to know about you.
Sure, thank you. Um, first of all, I'd like to thank you for this opportunity to be considered. Um, I do believe I have excellent qualifications for, for this position. Um, in my 35 years working for the federal government, but for both the air force and then the space force, I've managed multiple $200 million per year programs. Um, this has given me a great experience in creating a vision and leading a team to accomplish a goal. And also in applying sometimes complex and what might seem to be convoluted government regulations to achieve that goal. Um, also certainly have the experience of managing large and complex budgets. Um, but what I would like to highlight most is the ability to craft good business deals with our commercial partners that are good for them or good for the government. Um, rather than making an adversarial relationship, which I feel too many people in that position would do. Um, additionally, as a member, excuse me, as a current member of the planning commission, so I have a direct experience with applying our code um, to development and zoning here in, in this town. And all through the ongoing restructuring project for the Unified Development Code. So we've, we've gotten down and thirty, very intimate with that code. So I, I know that code very well. Um, and to kind of highlight the one point I, I really want to leave you with in, in both my work in the government sector and then here on the planning commission. Um, I take pride in always, like you said, creating those mutually beneficial and cooperative relationships. And so I, I really took it um, positive. I really was happy to hear when we were doing the public hearing for the natural medicine and healing centers. Uh, one of the constituents, he took, he came back to the microphone and took it and he said, you, you know, you, you all really listened to us and you really tried to incorporate what we're trying to do and learn about it. Um, while at the same time, you know, not just doing whatever we ask, you know, balancing that with the needs of the citizens. So I really appreciated that. Um, and I think it captures what I'm trying to accomplish here. So with that, I look forward to any questions.
Thank you. Oh, you want to go first this time?
Hey Don, thanks for applying.
Sure.
Um, so my question is, many have said we are a divided community. What do you see as a way to reduce the division?
Well, um, yeah, I mean, unfortunately, I, I, I wish I could disagree with their opening statement, but um, uh, it, it's, it is true. Um, what I, how I put it in my head, it's, it's what I call the politics of, of destruction. Um, and we're seeing at the national level now, the, the country is waking up to this. Um, unfortunately, we've been experiencing it for several years now. Um, we've seen how uh, the schools have much of the staff has been cut, um, programs have been cut, um, even buildings have, you know, been, I'll say abandoned. I don't know if that's quite the right word, but for Gateway, they're not amusing anymore. Um, and quite frankly, we see that directed at this council in terms of, of the recall petitions that are being, being sent around. So it's, it's, you know, it's tough to know how to break that cycle. Um, I, I would say first and foremost, if someone's going to destroy something, they, they have an absolute responsibility to say, well, we're going to get rid of that, but we're, we're going to do this instead. And in very few cases have I heard that. Um, if, if not that, if we don't want that anymore, well then, then what? Um, so I think in terms of what the city council can do, what members of the community can do, and that's engage in that conversation and you know, i- if you don't want this type of program, well then where does that leave, you know, the, the, perhaps in this case, like with the school, where does that leave the kids who benefited from that program? Um, what, what's the plan? Um, so I think that's an outreach uh, the city and the, and the council can do to engage with those members and say, okay, we, we get, we get you don't care for that, but then what? Thanks.
Thank you. Jeff?
Hey Don, how are you today?
Hey, I'm very good. How are yourself?
Oh, another, another Thursday in paradise. Um, the seat that you're replacing um, was on council for roughly one year. Um, what have you seen us do or not do in this last year that you may have done differently if you were in that seat?
Um, I, I can't say that I would, I wouldn't have a list of things that I would have asked you to have done differently. Um, to evidence of that, I've stood here at this podium and advocated for positions you ultimately took. So um, I think from that standpoint, we're uh, in very, very strong alignment. Um, so I, I, I don't mean that to sound like a non-answer, but uh, I, I think.
No, no, non-answer is fine.
Well, I, I mean, I think it is an answer, but the answer is I, I, I don't, I don't have anything I would, I would change.
Perfect, thank you.
Carol, um, first, thank you for applying and secondly, thank you for enduring what now two years of code revision.
Yeah, it's, we, uh, we did our last, well, first pass through our last section, then there's going to be the whole big, okay, here it all is. So we still got that ahead of us.
Um, the question I've asked most folks or all, all of the candidates thus far is uh, what other volunteer opportunities have you taken advantage of besides the planning commission? If you could let us know what else you're doing in the community, if anything.
Yes.
And as Jeff said, there's no right answer. Just what else is on your plate?
Well, that has um, evolved over time, much, um, very much related to the age of my children. So uh, when the boys were little, um, you know, den master and then promoted to cub master. Um, that also came with a big pay increase as well. Um, uh, my wife was PTO lead, so that was just tons of hours. So, and if your wife's PTO lead, you're co-PTO lead. Uh, as moving forward now, you know, boys are older and they just started college. So my interest have, and my volunteerism has changed to community activism. And so whether that's um, being on the planning commission, uh, speaking to the council on occasion, um, supporting uh, candidates I believe in, um, I've knocked on probably 500 doors. And that's been a wonderful experience getting to know the, the people of this town and what they stand for. So.
Thanks Don.
Alright, thanks.
George?
Hi Don, thanks for replying. Um, my question is very broad.
Okay.
So I'll give you some room on this, but basically I want to know your thoughts, strengths, challenges around our local economy here in Woodland Park.
Yeah, um, I mean, our, our, our local economy as, as I see it is good, but where I see it could definitely be what I would consider better is it's still, it's still very much a, a service economy. Um, whether it's, you know, uh, restaurants, shops, um, education. Um, and I, I, I think we're a little out of balance in that regard. Um, I'm not saying we should, you know, build a huge steel mill here in, in Woodland Park, but at the same time, uh, we have some, some great strengths. Um, particularly it's a just phenomenal place to live. So we can attract talent, um, if we have s- something for them to do when they get here. Um, so what I would do, um, what I would encourage and, and the model I've seen work well down in, in Colorado Springs, uh, there's a, uh, it's not a business per se, but there's an entity uh, called the Catalyst Campus and it's, what it is, is an incubator for small businesses. So I was just thinking of an example today, um, you know, with the price of eggs, if I was going to make hand painted wooden Easter eggs, you know, well, pretty soon, assuming that takes off, which I think it would, um, I'm going to have to hire people. I need, I need a, a, a building. I need, oh my God, I have to figure out how to do payroll and taxes and all that. And it's, it's overwhelming. Um, and that's what a business incubator can do. They can like, well, here's, here's a, a, an office space you can rent for a pretty reasonable price. And, and we have business software and we have people who can show you how to use it. Um, that's the kind of thing I think would, would help to get us broaden our, our economic opportunities for the citizens of this town.
Thank you.
Smitty?
Well, since Councilwoman Carol took my question, I think about the volunteering and stuff like that. Um, outside of your crazy amounts of the education that you have, I was reading that and I'm like, wow. But even with that, since she already took my first question, the second question would be, you know, we, and as you've seen, we get scrutinized a lot.
Hmm.
Will that be something that you can compartmentalize to keep it out of your, yourself from tearing yourself apart? Cause we do get a lot of it.
And, and I do understand and I've spoken with some of you and I, and I know you've only showed me, you know, this much of, of what you might have to deal with in this position. So in, really in, in terms of stepping forward and, and presenting myself, um, if, if there was one hesitation that, I'll just be frank and I'll with you on that, that, that was it. Um, but in, in my uh, career as a program manager in, in, in the air force, space force, um, doing what's popular was never the job. Um, I always used to joke, it's like, I can't make all you happy. I don't even think I can make any of you happy. So, so my mantra was try to disappoint you all equally. Um, so yes, so in my mind, it's that, that applies here. So that's how, that's how I
Thanks.
Deal with that.
Don, I'd just like to understand what you see as the role of a council member.
Well, I, I think it really goes back to um, setting for this community, creating the environment where both businesses and families can thrive. So that, make sure that one doesn't run roughshod over the other. That it's a balance, that it, that it benefits everyone. So um, that's much, those words are much easier to say than to do. I, I, I certainly get that. Um, but a- also my leadership positions is, is, it can be overwhelming. It's like every decision, oh my God, there's like 10, 10,000 variables. Um, but you got to have, this is where we're trying to get to down the road. We may never get there, but that's the direction we're heading. And once you have a direction, then it simply becomes, does this decision bring us closer to that direction or take us farther away? And once you boil it down and you know what your, what your core focus is, um, ironically, I think decision-making, even at the strategic level becomes quite easy.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Alright.
Amy, we'll take you back to the conference room. And bring us Don DeZellin, please. Yes. He's not here. I put him at the end in case he does come in. Welcome Don. If you mind taking a couple of minutes and uh, just tell us a little bit about yourself and something, what you'd like the council to know about you this evening?
Well, I've been up here most of 30 years. Um, there was a short period of time when I did not live up here, but I lived either in Green Mountain Falls or Colorado Springs, but kept involved in the city through church and that type of stuff. Um, so I do have some long time ties to the community. Um, I've been active in this community. Um, I was a member of the Rotary Club up here in the early nineties. Uh, was the part of the group that, or was the chairman of the committee that formed their scholarship and helped run that for several years. Um, I was on the uh, last um, comprehensive plan team. I co-chaired the sustainability in Parks, Trails and Open Space Chapter. Um, I was a member of the 22, 2022 Charter Review Committee. I've served on the Parks and Rec Board from 1920 or 19, let's try this again, 2019 to present. I cannot read tonight. And I've served on the planning commission since um, 2023. Um, I've regularly attended city council meetings, either in person. I've regularly attended city council meetings, either in person or by Zoom since about twenty-eighteen. And I have ran for city councils in the last like three or four elections. And have you know, or previously interviewed for council and mayor positions. Part of the reason why I applying again is because. Oh, my time's up.
Go ahead, finish your thought.
Is because I'm a candidate who has observed the council at work for many years, is informed on many of the issues that are going on in the community. I have seeked office before and have support for many citizens and past and current community leaders in town, and I'm willing to serve my community.
Thank you, Don. Smitty? You're on, you're on.
Councilwoman, Councilwoman Carol. As you know. Don, we get criticized a lot, okay? Is that something you personally would be able to? To, what's that word? Deal with?
In forty years of management, you kind of learn that skill. You develop the, they're not attacking me, they're venting. And you go on with it, you listen to what they say, take from it what you need to. And y- you don't take it personal.
Okay, thanks.
George?
Hi, Don, thanks for applying. Um, my question is broad, uh, so I'm, I'm gonna give you a lot of room. Tell me your thoughts about the local economy up here, and I am particularly interested in, in yours, um, being in the position here.
Economy. Up here. Has always been a tough one. Businesses, and I, I used to manage a business up here. You know, you make your money in the winter, I mean, the summer to get through the winter. Um, you have to be good to your local people because that's where your base is. If you're not good, it's not gonna work. Coming out of COVID. I think the economy has started to go up a little bit because people learned that you needed to shop local during that time. Ongoing, I'm not too sure where it's gonna go. The economy could, could take several turns, you take a look just roughly at the um. Sales tax report for the city and you're seeing a little bit of a decline in taxable, tax collection, so. That means that there's businesses that aren't doing as well as they had in the past. Because the taxes have been collected, so you know that their sales are down. So I think we need to do as much as we can to support our local businesses, take away barriers. That type of thing that could be hindering them from reaching their full potential and uh. Helping the town grow economically that way.
Thank you.
Carol? Don, first, thanks again for applying. And thank you for your time on the Planning Commission, I, I let the other Don know how much I appreciated the mind-numbing work you've done with code revision.
We're almost there.
And I appreciate it, um, and because you have been on a couple of different committees um here in Woodland Park affiliated with the municipal government. Of those experiences, which has been your favorite?
I wanna say probably the comprehensive plan. Because we did that during a tough time, we hit, we hit it right in the middle or beginning of COVID really. And to be able to get people together on Zoom meetings for several hours. To go over things that were kind of tedious at times. I think was a really good task. Uh, I mean, we got a lot done, each, each of the subsections got a good job done on their section. And to be able to get it presented in a, and done and through the Planning Commission into the council on time. Was really a feat during that time, so I, I think that was probably the best, plus I made a lot of friends that I've kept through because of that.
Thanks. Jeff?
Evening, Don, how are you?
Not bad, Jeff.
Um, the seat that you're replacing was on council for about a year. Um, in this last year, what have you seen us do or not do that you may have done differently if you'd been in that seat?
Kinda hard to answer on that one.
And by, by all means, no answer is fine, so.
Well, I, I was gonna say, I have actually been very pleasantly surprised. And for the most part, by the actions of this council. You know, I was a candidate against most of you during the last one, so. You know, we all have our different views on things and such, um, but. I think I've seen a team that has started to gel. And be able to come to consensus on things at, when they need to. So, I would say that. Asking what would I change or have done differently? Is really kind of a hard question to, to answer. Those were decisions that had to be made by you guys as a group. With the information that you had on hand. So, um, art of government, or why government exists. Is because there was things that the populace did not want to handle. Um, as far as, you know, I don't want to go put out fires, or I don't want to go arrest somebody. So I'm gonna let government take care of that, so you have to have some trust in those people that you've elected and that are making those decisions. You can always second guess, and if you're not happy with how it's going, that's what, you know, election time is for.
Thank you, Don.
Catherine, go ahead. Hey, Don.
Hey, Catherine.
How are you?
Good.
Good, um, like everybody said, thanks for applying. Um, so my question is, many have said we are a divided community, what do you see as a way to reduce the division?
That is a good question. A lot of. What I see is people that believe things that they've heard. Social media has become an enemy instead of a help. I know that if you go online and look at things that have been said about me, there's a lot of things that are not true out there. And it's really hard sometimes to defend yourself against those things. But if we would start looking. For things to criticize people for, and look for the things that we can get together behind each other and accomplish. To, to get rid of these divisions, I think we would do a lot better. I remember when we first started, when I first came up here. If, you know, you wanted something done, you just had to put the word out, and there'd be a ton of people there to help with that project or, or, or whatever. There wasn't the, well, I'm not gonna go help them because of what they do or what they stand for or whatever. You know, there's people that would go and help. And now everybody seems to be, I'm on this side of it, and I'm not gonna go help, or I'm. We, we, we need to get rid of that, we need to go back to people. Being willing to help, criticize differences, and at the end of the day, agree to disagree, and we move on.
Thank you, Don. Alright, Don, I'm gonna ask Amy to uh exchange you with the next candidate and take you back to the conference room, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
You bet. Just so everyone knows, we have one more person to interview, and we may, it may take a little longer, and we may start a little late this evening with the city council meeting. But bear with us, we have one more person to, to work through, thank you. Welcome, Joy.
Hi.
Hi.
Hello, everyone.
Joy, if you'd just take two minutes and just tell us, or, or however long, less than two minutes, that you would like to share what you'd like the council to know about you.
Okay, um, my name is Joy Pickett. I am in the Risk Assessment and Management Business. I assess and advise on insurance. People don't like insurance. I've lived in Woodland Park since two thousand eighteen, when I bought the insurance center. And I merged it with the current agency that I had. And my plan was to grow to a national company, and I did that. We are now licensed in nineteen states.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I'm a mother of three and a grandmother to two granddaughters. They are ten and thirteen. I'm a conservative Republican with a passion to preserve our American way of life. I applied for the vacant council member seat with no agenda. Other than making sure you had a candidate that you feel comfortable working with, that aligns with your vision and philosophy for this city. As I feel aligned with you guys, I've watched over several years, particularly this group right here. I have no conflict of interest. Um, when not working on major business strategy projects, I look for opportunities to learn and grow, such as this vacant seat. And that's, I'm keeping it short and sweet.
Thank you, Joy.
Yeah.
Catherine, I'm gonna let you go first.
Hi, Joy, thanks for applying, um, so my question is, um, many have said we are a divided community, what do you see as a way to reduce the division?
There is a division, and not just in this community, but across the country. The solutions are. People seem to just, they don't agree with you, they want to shut you out, don't talk to you, block you. But that's not the way, we have to communicate and listen to other people, their ideas, because that's how we learn and grow. We don't listen to opposition, you know, how am I gonna learn if I don't hear your point of view? Uh, so that dialogue needs to be open. How, that's a good question. One I, I think about often, and I think it's gonna take a collaborative effort, maybe to find that solution, how to open the dialogue. And not just, just shut somebody up, you gotta listen.
Jeff?
First of all, thanks for applying, um, the seat that you're replacing was on council for about a year. Um, in this last year, what have you seen us do or not do that you may have done differently? And not having a, a specific example is perfectly okay.
I'm, actually, like I said, that's the only reason I applied, because I feel like I align with this council right here, because. I would have voted, I've watched online, um, I don't come to the meetings in person, but I, I watch online and I think, you know, how would I have voted? And then I researched, because I know you may be privy to a little bit more information than I am, just watching the council meetings, so I researched. I would have voted the same way every time.
Thank you. Carol?
Again, thank you for applying, especially if you've been watching our, our meetings. Um, I've asked all the other candidates, um, y- your resume is very impressive, and, and thank you for taking that insurance center to the next level. I, I know the Matthews very well, I'm sure they're very proud of what you.
Very, very good people.
What other organizations or boards or commissions have you been able to volunteer on here in Woodland Park or, or in Teller County over the last few years?
A while back, I volunteered with the, I was on the board of the Woodland Music Series, but it's no longer in existence. But post-acquisition of the business has really taken a lot of my time.
I'm sure.
And doing the growth that I wanted to do nationally, so that, I don't even think you see me out a whole lot. Post-COVID, I got comfortable staying in, you know, it's like, ah, I've gone to custom, but you gotta get back out there. So to answer your question, not many, not in this community, but back home, I was part of Kiwanis and the Chamber, they are very active. But post-acquisition of this business, um, and the goals I set for myself and my business were. Were very high goals, and it took everything, I had to achieve them, and I did. And now I have the time, and most importantly, I'm passionate about where you are right now.
Thanks.
I'm gonna go. Hi, Joy, thanks for applying, uh, as everybody's said, and congratulations, um, I know the hard work that, uh, you've put into that. Um, or getting your business to where it is, so my question for you is broad in nature. Talk to me about the local economy up here in Woodland Park.
It's not as vibrant, of course, um, as it used to be when I first got here, it was, when I first got here in two thousand eighteen, it was very vibrant. The traffic on, starting on Thursday through Sunday on the highway. Was astounding, it's virtually gone, I think COVID had, um, everything to do with that. I think, because that, that's when everything just stopped, halted, and we need the tourism back, we need the economy back. And so I think it stems back from COVID.
Okay.
Did I answer your question?
Well, I mean, you can, it was very broad, I've just, I just wanted to hear your thoughts on the lo- yeah, the local economy, so what are your thoughts on the local economy?
Local economy, um.
And that could be, you know, it could range from the cost of living or, or the, you know, the businesses.
Cost of living is high here, it's a small community, highly sought after, with not enough housing. I think as far as taxes, the, the sales tax goes, I think it's in part where, where we are now. We do need to find ways to increase revenue to get the, the economy back for the community to thrive. We need communication, cash, control, culture, and to bring back the vibrancy.
Good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes. Hi, Joy, thanks for applying. Really important question is that I have, is being up here on the dais. You get criticized, you get thanked, and everything else. Do you feel that you have that backbone to be able to? Get, you know, past all the really harsh criticism and everything else?
Absolutely, I'm probably your strongest candidate in that uh arena, because as I mentioned, I'm in insurance. So I get calls every day, Coloradans, particular Teller County, don't understand why insurance is so high. I've had no claims, this is ridiculous, you people need to do something, uh, I get that all day, I have, I have tough skin. I've watched. The national political arena the last four years, and I have the tough skin it takes. That doesn't bother me, I'll just be me and do what my brain, my instincts. Tell me to do, and I'm just me, and anybody else can, they be them. So if they criticize, it doesn't come here, it's always out here, and that's what I have to tell my team every day. I said, don't let it hit you here, it's not personal, they don't understand, we understand, they don't get it, leave that criticism here, it don't, it don't hit you. Leave it over there, and it's not your problem, don't make it your problem, you've got problems of your own. Their problem is theirs, all you can do is help them through it, and help them see, help them try to understand your point of view. And, but I think I'm strong in that arena.
Thanks.
Joy, I, I just have a small question, and I'd just like to know what. Joy, I, I just have a small question, and I'd just like to know what your understanding is of the role of a city council person.
City council person is, of course, we get those meetings twice a month, the special sessions, it's the legislative branch where you, uh, citizens have concerns, they bring it to you. Changes in ordinances and law, and you collaborate, vote and, and do what's best for the citizens of the city.
Thank you.
That's what I think it is.
Thank you. Alright, that is, uh, we had a candidate that, um, has just shown up, but it is time for our council meeting now. So council will be considering those that we've interviewed so far. And we'll see that in, in the, uh, first part of the meeting and ceremonies and presentations. We have a few things to go through first, but if the candidates would please stay, uh, it won't be long before we, we deliberate and vote. So go ahead and have a seat, Joy. And if you'd bring everyone else back in, Amy, we're going to take a quick five minute break for medicinal reasons.